Council, please come to order. Please join.
...................................................
Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Dan Straylon.
Here.
Hopkins is out.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So move.
Brandon Horst and Strylan, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes. Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any items that are on the agenda, please step forward. My phone, state your name and address, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay?
Good evening. Harry Ehrlich, 725 Countryside Lane. First, I'd like to acknowledge and give some credit to the staff for being able to work with the auditor and get it completed under a tighter timeframe than probably was hoped to be this year. I've done a few administrations and audits, and usually it takes 10 months, so they've got it done less than that. Also, I would be interested, and I do believe that it's a good audit in terms of the completion reading it. There are a couple of directives in there that the staff have agreed need to be addressed in the next few months, and I hope to see those addressed into the deal with, you know, accounting and tracking and double checking and that kind of thing. And I think that it's good that the auditor gave those recommendations. Just look forward to a good budget process. It's good to have this information as you go forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of consent agenda?
So move.
Support.
DeYoung, Brainerhorst, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we're going to move into a public hearing on rezoning application from QuickTrip for property located along Washington Street from agricultural A1, community commercial CC. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those watching at home and those in attendance, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. As Mayor DuPont stated, this evening, we're entertaining two rezoning applications, both of them for QuickTrip. Both of the applications that we have this evening are for the parcels that are highlighted in yellow. To orientate everyone, here we have Washington Street that's located right over here. And then we have the northbound exit ramp via Highway 163 that's located right over here. Now, the rezoning applications that we have this evening, existing parcels are zoned A1 agricultural and one limited light industrial. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the proposed rezoning of these parcels, what is being proposed is community commercial. That's the city's main commercial zoning district that we have under the current zoning code as well. Again, this just shows where the existing zoning parcels are, both the A1 and the M1. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the comp plan is concerned, anytime that we consider a rezoning application, we always consider the city's comprehensive plan. It is important to note under the city's comprehensive plan that the Washington Street corridor is identified as preferred growth area for the city. Commercial development is also forecasted under the city's comprehensive plan. In addition, anytime we look at things, we always like to look at the future use land map. The future use land map by and large follows the existing zoning district for the industrial parcel that we have. This one's over here by PPI, and it identifies commercial mixed use, so it is commercial zoning for the A1 parcel. So when we consider both the strategic priorities as well as preferred growth area for the Washington Street corridor, it's asked belief that the proposed rezoning application that we are considering this evening aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we would like to state that this is a conditional rezoning that we're considering this evening, and the reason is, is on the parcel that we are considering is currently zoned M1 and owned by PPI. That parcel will need to be subdivided. So what the condition is, is that this parcel that the rezoning has become official, upon kind of survey, that one that has been approved and recorded within 12 months of the rezoning, otherwise the property will rezon back or revert back to its original zoning as well. Now, finally, Mr. Mayor, it's important to note the planning and zoning commission considered these items at their February 26 meeting at both boards. It says we're agreed unanimously. So with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right. Thank you. Mike? Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel, comments, questions?
It's going to make that street busy. That's, you know, it was a concern of hours and stuff.
Okay, anything else? Okay, any member of the audience have a comment about this particular item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number 1036 entitled an ordinance amending zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the CC district to include the property generally located at the southeast corner of Washington Street and Highway 163, directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number. The date of this change on the official zoning map, this is the first reading. I assume there's nothing to add?
That is correct.
Presentation, all right. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Brandon Horst, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. And then we move to a public hearing on rezoning application from QuickTrip for property located along Washington Street from limited light industrial M1 to community commercial. Probably nothing to add?
That is correct. As Mayor, it's the exact same presentation we just went through.
Okay. Any written comments on this one?
No written comments.
Okay, counsel, comments, questions? Any member of the audience have any comments on this item? All right, now I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Or? Mr. Strylan, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1037 entitled, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the CC district to include the property generally located at 2103 Washington Street, directing the zoning administrator to note that. Ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map, first reading. I have a motion for approval. Move. First reading. DeYoung?
Support.
Brandon Horst, any discussion?
I have to change this.
I've had that comment so many times, I haven't talked about it.
I did ask about that. I think it had to do with the traffic.
Sure.
Traffic study. I think Washington Street gets about 10 for it.
11,000 cars.
That's what I thought. And then on the east.
Less so on the interchange activity.
East side, it's only 8,000 a day. So, yeah, I think all numbers.
Yeah, I heard the scuffle about, I thought it was going to be a quick start. Was that just a fellow rumor or was it you? Did that ever come up? That was just a rumor?
That's Casey Bonjour for QuickTrip Incorporated this evening. Stacy?
Yes, good evening. So yes, I can help explain that. We do get this question quite a bit. So I work for QuickTrip Incorporated. We are now in, have over 850 stores in six states. In Illinois, Iowa, and South Dakota, we are considered QuickStar. So when we expanded into these three states, QuickTrip with a Q was already here. And so to avoid confusion, we named, we named in these states only QuickStar. So it's still, it rolls up to QuickTrip Incorporated. Everything is the same other than the signage on the building. So same products are offered, same building, same layout. So hopefully that answers the question. And we will continue to keep an eye, you know, on the east side as well with your question related to that as well. Any other questions? Can you answer?
Do you put cocaine in the donuts? Or the dish?
They are pretty tasty.
I'll sweep my neck out and say that to have the competition for cases will be a good.
Yeah, well, we look forward to hopefully having a store in Pella.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? We'll vote on the motion then. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6661 entitled, resolution ordering construction of Pella indoor recreation and aquatic center. Fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking bids thereof. This was resolutions tabled on February 20, 2024, until the next council meeting on April 2, 2024. Okay, moving on, resolution number 6673 entitled, resolution entering into a 20AD agreement with cross mental health region concerning the law enforcement crisis intervention program. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor DuPont stated, what we're entertaining with this resolution is a 20AD agreement across mental health region. Now, anytime you hear the word 20AD agreement, the council is well aware of what a 20AD is. But for those in attendance, if you could substitute the word 20AD with the word contract, that's what it is in the civilian world or the private industry rather. Now, it is important to note that we talked about this proposed agreement during policy and planning on March 5, and council directed staff to bring it tonight for formal consideration. Now, again, we have, the purpose of the agreement that we have here is that we're hoping that, A, to be able to address mental health-related issues in cooperative manners. So let's go ahead, Mandy, and talk about the details of the proposed agreement. Now, our obligations under this agreement is we will assign a police officer to serve as a crisis intervention officer, and they're going to be designated what is the mental health professional. Now, all police personnel will receive crisis intervention training under the term of the agreement at no cost. Now, as far as the initial term of the agreement, it's the impact date of January 1st of this year. It'll run till through December 31st on this. Now, under the agreement, cross will fund 100% of our crisis intervention officers wages and benefits for three years. They're also going to purchase a vehicle, full position, as well as including all equipment and cost to hire and train at the backfield as well. Now, we anticipate this will be a three-year agreement at no cost to the city of Pella after the three years. That's when it will be 100% of the cost to the city. We do have this position budgeted in the upcoming budget deliberations for fiscal year 2425. Will be designated personnel, our staff, to serve as crisis intervention officer. We want to hire a new police officer as well, so other duties of the police department will be able to be fulfilled while we serve as the crisis, or have a person dedicated to crisis intervention officer. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that covers the staff presentation, and we are recommending approval this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Carlstone, Branderhorst, same discussion?
Oh, the, excuse me, the mental health professionals, he paid by cross or that person paid by cross too?
Yes, Captain Hosky?
Yes, that is correct. The, the mental health professional will be an employee and paid by cross.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Council?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6674 entitled, resolution approving preliminary plat for Epcun subdivision. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. This evening, we have a preliminary plat for the proposed Epcun subdivision. Just to orientate everyone, Washington Street, Highway G28 is located right over here. Our new five-foot old road extension is located right up here, and the Prairie Ridge subdivision is located over here. Now, the area that we're talking about this evening is just shy of 26 acres for the proposed preliminary plat. As council is aware, we typically deal with two types of preliminary plats. The preliminary plat that we are considering this evening is really the overall game plan for the subdivision, and it deals with the infrastructure required for the subdivision. The final plat always comes later, and it's typically submitted to council's consideration once the infrastructure has been constructed and is being ready to be dedicated to the city of Pella. Also, the final plat is what's used for land transfer purposes with the county, Marion County as well. Tonight, we're considering the preliminary plat, which means we're going to be talking about the overall game plan of the development. Another key difference with the final plats is final plats are often done in phases of the development as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the overall development that we have, again, for this 26-acre lot is roughly 83 home. As we discussed during the rezoning process, this development is being marketed to individuals 55 years and older, but I want to stress it is available for sale for all ages as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the requirements, there's a lot of detail in the staff memo, but in essence, what's required from preliminary plats is the preliminary plat needs to meet the requirements of the city's zoning and subdivision ordinances, and it also needs to conform to the city's comprehensive plan. Based on staff's review on each one of these items, we believe that the proposed preliminary plat complies with all three of these items, and as a result, we are recommending approval this evening. It is important to note that the planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this preliminary plat after January 2nd meeting. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Or?
Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any discussion?
As I recall, on the initial information, this is, excuse me, targeted 55 plus and not limited.
That is correct.
Do we know what's planned on the outlots or that for drainage? Just one large outlot in the middle?
I'd like to direct that question back to Jerry Bydis as far as the outlots. What is being planned at the outlots of the subdivision?
The outlot you see in the middle of the subdivision, the outlot. And then the outlot to the north between Prairie Ridge and Epcun is the American Energy Easement, which will be a trail of the future once the power lines is spared.
You're going to miss the, what was that, Ron C?
Uh, those are trail connections.
Sure.
Well, Z was retention.
Retention.
That's the one in the middle is the pond.
Oh, yeah.
W is the retention, correct. Anything else?
The power line is being located.
That is correct.
Okay, anything else? Then we'll vote on the resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6675 entitled, resolution approving ordering the preparation of plans and specifications, form of contract notice of hearing and notice of letting, setting dates for public hearing, authorizing the taking of bids and authorizing bid opening for the sanitary sewer CIPP lining project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DuPont stated, what this resolution really does is it authorizes, council staff established, May 7th is the public hearing date for this project. It also gives staff permission to seek bids for a sanitary sewer lining project. Now, as far as the project itself, and before we go on, Denny, do you want to, could you give a little bit of context on both projects that we have, have for this particular project?
Well, I know some of you, Counsel, you've seen the product. This lining involves that soft sock, they go in and clean it, knock off any protruding surfaces, pull the sock through, then pump it full of hot steam, cure it out for two to three hours, and it actually then sets up another solid wall pipe on the inside of the pipe. So much that 15-inch, that's some of the larger that we line. About two-thirds of that is actually a double barrel to remind you. You can't tell by this exhibit. So these were some of the worst of the worst that we knew we could still salvage and save without toe reconstructing, you know, the streets above and so on and so forth.
All right, thank you, Danny. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the project is concerned, the engineer's probable opinion and probable cost is just over $201,000 for the project. Council ordered to approve this resolution this evening. We conducted bid lighting on the project on April 25. The public hearing for the project would be right around May 7. And if all went well, and if council actually awards a contract on the 7th, we'd actually be issuing a notice of proceed on the project on May 27. Now, the final completion date for the project is scheduled for August 30th this year. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Mr. Strylan, DeYoung, any discussion? All right, let's vote on a motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6676 entitled, resolution approving engineering services agreement with Garden and Associates Limited for the West Knight Street reconstruction project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor DuPont stated, what this resolution would do is approve an engineering services agreement with Garden and Associates for the West Knight Street reconstruction project. To orientate everyone, Washington Street is located here, the whole street segment that's for the engineering design is the screen highlighted, the segment right here. Walmart would be located right up over here, that's just off the map there as well. Now, as far as the project itself, if you were to drive out there, what you would notice is this is somewhat of a gravel road asphalt overlay mix on it. 100% of this project is located within the city limits. And what the plan is, is to decorate this road to what's called an urban cross section, which is commonly referred to as a standard city street on there as well, or a concrete street. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the contract that we are considering this evening, engineering services agreement, total just over $58,000 in our agreement for the development agreement with the project, is the developer is going to be responsible for about half of the cost of the project. The contract that we're considering this evening, the city's proposed share would just be over $29,000 for the project. Now, as far as the preliminary construction estimate for the project is just over $345,000. The funding source, and likewise with the engineering services fees, half of this project would be the city's responsibility. So overall, our estimated cost for both engineering and construction on this project is $220,000. The proposed funding source for the project would be the city's road use tax fund. Now, if approved this evening, and we started with the project, we anticipate that we should be holding a bid lighting yet this spring. Hopefully have summer completion or summer construction for the project as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6677 entitled, resolution accepting fiscal year 2223 annual audit. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DuPont stated, this resolution would accept the city's fiscal year 2022 through 2023 fiscal year audit. So that would be the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2023. Some of the brief highlights before we turn the floor over to the auditor this evening is non-modified opinion was given on the financial statements. For those of you in private account or private industry, that terminology typically is unqualified, at least used to be unqualified as well. We do have some of the highlights that we have up here as well, but we also have Mr. Dustin from Pervin KDB in attendance this evening. I know Dustin will be covering this as well with council. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd go ahead and turn the floor over to Dustin.
Okay, floor adjourned, Dustin.
Appreciate you. Okay, beautiful. My name is Dustin Alpens. I'm a manager with Pervin KDB, and I represent the audit. So this was our first year with the city, so super excited about the opportunity and super grateful to Brian and Vivian and all, and Mike and all of the accounting staff for taking such great care of us and helping us turn it around fairly quickly. We, yeah, we did feel we're, just because of the timing of our contract in about January, mid-January, and to have it done in mid-Marches. No small feat, especially for our first year audit, so we appreciate all our hard work. If you have any questions, as I'm going through my presentation, feel free to stop me. I have such a passion for city finance. If nobody stops me, I'll just kind of keep talking until I'm done. Next slide. So we start with the independent auditor's report. So essentially, our job and what you pay us for is to give an opinion on your financial statements. So I always like to remind council that you as management are responsible for your financial statements, and it's our responsibility as your auditors to come and test, examine, issue an opinion on your financial statements. So it makes sense, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we are allowed to give as your auditors. It provides assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Next slide, please. We do issue a couple of other reports, the first one being the government auditing standards report. So because of the level of grant funding you received as a city in Iowa, you were required to look a little bit closer at your compliance laws, contracts, grant agreements, internal controls. And so we did have two findings related to that test work, both of them material weakness level, which is the highest level that we, of finding that we give. So the first one being material audit adjustments and prior period adjustments. So these are simply just errors that we found during the audit process that had to be corrected for your financial statements to be fairly presented. And then the second one is lack of segregation and common duty. So in that internal control work that I touched on earlier, there were some places in internal control that we felt there were some gaps. And so we had to note those as well. And then the next report that we issued was the single audit report. So because of your second round of ARPA funding this year, that pushed you over $750,000 in federal expenditures for the year. And so we have to do what's called a single audit, which is basically an audit of that specific program and those specific expenditures. And we had no findings related to that test work. So all good there? Next slide, please. Beautiful. The final report is the Iowa legal compliance report. So the office of the state auditor gives us a series of checklists of specific state statutes that they want us to check compliance with. And so we did have three findings related to that test work. The first one being there were certain categories of expenditures where the expenditures exceeded budgeted amounts. So in Iowa, it's not necessarily the budget in total that we're concerned about, it's the specific functions. So if you think public safety, public works, culture, each one of those functions also has to be under budget in addition to the budget being, the expenditures being under budget in total. There were also some deficit fund balances. And then the third one, not all inter-fundra answers were approved by city council. So those were just three legal compliance items that we found during, during the audit. And if you want to work, yep, next slide. Perfect. So we'll start digging into the general fund. So total general fund fund balance did decrease slightly, but it's still the second in the five years presented at about $4.4 million. Comparing it to your fund balance policy, your fund balance policy costs were about 35% of expenditures in that fund balance, and you're just under 41%. So overly amounting your fund and balance policy, and in good shape there. Next slide, please. We also look at your revenues by type. And so this year, and you're going to see this throughout the presentation in the general fund, you did assume the operations of that ambulance started in July 1, 2022. And so it's, it's going to throw up your, your revenues and your expenditures. And so this is the first place you see that your charges for services went up significantly because the ambulance added that to your, your service effort. Next slide, please. So overall, national general fund revenues, your property taxes revenue increased about $165,000 related to an increase in levy, the intergovernmental decreased slightly related to receiving an airport grant in the prior year, your charges for services. Your charges for services increased by about one point one million related to that ambulance service starting. Uh, use of money in property increased slightly related to just better market conditions. You're getting a better interest rate on, on your deposits. Miss Lane is starting to decrease two hundred and fifty thousand because you received a, a large one-time donation in twenty twenty-two. Uh, you did not receive in twenty twenty-three.
Next, please.
Same idea on the expenditure side. So your, your public safety increased pretty significantly as a percentage just because of the ambulance.
Next, please.
Overall expenditures increased about one point nine million. Public safety made up one point six million of that related to that ambulance service. Culture and wreck increased related to increased golf course costs because you also took over the management of the golf course in twenty twenty-three. So that added some additional cost. General government expenditures increased related to increased insurance costs. Then community and economic development expenditures decreased due to receiving a large grant in twenty twenty-two that you expended.
Okay, next.
Beautiful. Next, we'll look at your, your enterprise funds. So we give you quite a bit of information on here. So we give you two different income bars. So there's the, the light blue bar, and there is like the, the dark orangish brownish bar. So the, the light bluish bar is your income or loss with everything included, including depreciation. And then the, the brownish orangish bar is depreciation taken out, income loss. So the reason we, we give you both is because depreciation is a non-cash expense, right? It's not anything you're ever going to write a check for, but it does represent your capital replacement cost. So when those water lines or sewer lines get old and need to be replaced, if you've been covering depreciation for the last fifteen or twenty years, theoretically, that money would be sitting in your bank account, right? And theoretically, you wouldn't have to borrow. So that's why we give you both. It, it gives you a sense if you're covering your capital replacement cost, but it also gives you a sense if you're covering your operations. Right? So the, the water fund itself has covered depreciation in two of the five years presented. There were a couple of small losses, um, if you include depreciation. Expenses increased slightly due to reallocating an employee out, out of wastewater into water. And then revenues decreased slightly just due to decreased use of year-over-year.
Next, please.
On the, on the wastewater side, wastewater has covered depreciation in four out of the five years presented. Revenues increased about seven hundred and eighty-one thousand related to a large reimbursement for the Trump sewer project. And then expenses increased related to increased depreciation expense due to some of your large projects that are happening.
Next.
On the electric side, so this fund has covered depreciation in all five years presented, which is great to see. Your, your operating revenues increased about four hundred and fifty-seven thousand related to a large insurance reimbursement for a generator. And then that amount was offset by some decreased usage. And then your operating expenses actually did decrease due to decreased usage, which, you know, you had to purchase lost power. The last enterprise fund is your town communications fund. So this one is pretty new to the city yet, and so you can see some of those bars are, are negative, right? Pretty significantly. Um, in three out of the four years presented, it has had a loss. But twenty twenty-three is the first year where it made money. So that's great to see. Um, your, your revenues increased one point five million related to the increased number of customers. More customers are coming online and that utility, or that telecommunications fund is really, you know, starting to function as you would expect it to. Your operating expenses increased sixteen point five percent related to having to pay more programming costs because you have more customers. So in that position, which is that, that dark blue bar, it has been negative for the, all four years presented. So just something that we want to do, you, want you to keep an eye on. We, we expect, and I think the city expects, as that utility, you know, is matures, that, that'll turn around for you. But so I want you to keep an eye on it and make you aware of it. Last two slides, look at your tax rates. So in all five years presented, your, your tax rate has stayed pretty flat at about ten point two. And then the next slide looks at your, your levy. So your tax rate stayed flat because your valuation is increasing, your levy is increasing. So that's what that slide is looking at. And then, so I'm Dustin, and then Andy is the, the partner on the, the audit. So we are always available to you as city council. If there's ever anything that we can do for you, we're definitely here as a resource. Government accounting can get wild, so anything we can do to make your, your life easier, your job more understandable, we're definitely here, right? I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions, comments, I'm sure you all worked through all our papers and reports and your data.
Well, I have a question on note four, on page forty-five, for our customer accounts receivable and allowance for uncollectibles. What, what, can you explain the, the numbers down there? I was like, the electric is seven hundred and forty-four thousand. What is that?
Um, I don't know that I count that far. That's page forty-five.
Allowance for accounts receivable, Dustin. Mr. Butler, what was your question?
Well, I didn't know if those were real numbers or target numbers or expected numbers. Do you, do you know what they are?
Yes, as, as far as Brian, do you want to add, fill in the gaps on it?
Give me a second.
So typically, an allowance for double columns is basically expectations that you're, not all, a hundred percent of your customers are going to pay. And so to be conservative, you, you write out, or you write off a percentage of them for the expectation that not all the customers are going to pay.
So right now, the policy is, is if it's an account sixty days or over, we put it as a one hundred percent uncollectible. And if it's, if it's thirty days, we, um, any amount in the thirty day, we, um, say fifty percent of that is uncollectible while we try to collect it going forward. So some of those, I know, like, I think it was in twenty-three that there, we had one larger customer that had some changeover in their AP invoice pain, so they were constantly late. So those numbers kind of were exaggerated for part of the year because their invoicing system was being changed. So we do look at that, and then as bills are paid, if they are collected. So anything that's over sixty, we have in the past sent to collections to be collected. We're investigating an alternative source, trying to get better collection rates. So and if some of those utilities are people that have moved out of the city, um, left property, were rented or something like that that have left. So those numbers do fluctuate, but that is the general practices, those two, um, right down there is.
Okay. It's just that the electric number is so much more than all of them.
Because that's, we bill out more than the electric. Uh, it's a tiny utility that's.
But it's over seven hundred thousand.
Just to put that in perspective, your, um, charges for services for electric this year were about twenty-one point three million. So I, I agree with you that is a significant, but like Brian was saying, that, that builds up ten times more than all of your other utilities individually.
Is it a set percent per address? Is there a industry standard or a guideline with that? I think that's.
Um, every, every city kind of feels, does what it feels comfortable with. Um, there, there's no, as far as like setting the allowance, do you?
So seven thirty-four can be is one percent of twenty-one million. Fifty-six can be for water is one percent of what we go for water.
Oh, and.
Or in line.
Oh, I guess if we don't usually evaluate it like that, twenty, or, um, yeah, seven hundred thousand and twenty-one million would be about three-ish percent. And, but that's not, uh, kind of like Brian said, you have your yearly policies as far as like how long a delinquent bill has to be altered before it's considered uncollectible.
Yeah, did you set those parameters? That seems to make some sense, but I think, um, I'm concerned about the size of that number. So I was just wondering percentage, just to see if both electric and water are three-ish percent.
Sure.
So, well, that would be my question is, how many years build up is this? Is this just an annual thing, or is it building up for?
Dustin, in, in answering that question, this is the allowance that you take a look to see if the accounts receivable for utilities, which we don't write accounts off, that you estimate based on the age of that receivable, how much of that we could actually collect. So this is just an accounting estimation. We're not writing off accounts on here, and I want to stress that to council. If someone doesn't pay and then tries to come back and reconnect a service, they have to pay the bill on it. So we don't technically write anything off. This is an auditor's estimation of how much our receivables actually going to be written off. We've done that a couple of times through the years where we've actually written accounts off at the city, but we tend not to do that, uh, that very often. So these receivables will be large, and these are over a number of years.
Good, good point, Mike. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, if I could add just one, one time, I'd like to thank Dustin and his firm. Um, this year, as council's aware, Manmona and Associates has audited the cities for a number of years. And fortunately, they notified us, I won't say they, they notified us and told us that they no longer had the staff and capacity to perform the annual audit. So we are in a real bind. And we really appreciate Dustin's firm's willingness to audit the city of Pella for the first year. I was very impressed with the auditors on, it's not only the first year, but I thought the audit report was well-written. And we appreciate their assistance and also the recommendations they had. So I'd like to thank you, Dustin.
Thank you again to the city staff for, for helping us out. The first year was always the toughest, so they always promise it'll be easier next. It'll be less time-consuming next year for them.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Mandy, do we have a little motion or? I need a motion for approval, accepting the fiscal year audit. DeYoung, Carl Stone, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of abstract of bills number twenty-one forty-seven? What are the names of the wars? DeYoung.
Support.
Brandon Horst, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brandon Horst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone.
Yes.
Dan Strayland.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to address with this evening?
Well, I was wondering about the gentleman who was here about the, the turkey vultures. And she, she isn't here. I think he had a permit one time where he shot a few, I think he'd get a permit to, to kill, what, two, three? You know anything about that, Officer Hossi?
Yeah.
Anything we can do to eliminate these rascals? I know you can't go out and bolt away.
I know Chief worked with the DNR, I believe, through that process, uh, but I'm not for sure of exactly whether it was, was handled at that time.
And I don't know if he's tried, you know, how old or, or anxious or anything there to, I, I may stop and, and talk to him. But anyway, it's a pretty nasty situation for him and for his neighbors. But anyway.
A number of years ago, one of my neighbors had a nasty situation with nesting vultures. They called in the DNR and they took care of the tree. Wasn't, I don't remember how, but the DNR resolved.
Was it this badly because?
It was bad.
It was?
Yeah, it's bad. Very large trees in their backyard, it was a lot of them.
Because, you know, this situation is, is worse than two or three.
Yeah, yeah.
In case of this forty, forty-five bird.
That, when we had the discussion last time, it was mentioned that they're a protected species.
That complicates the problem.
So you can't get a permit to shoot, I think, two or three, it was a very limited number. You know, you feel this, you know, that permits and that are twelve cases.
I would turn it over to the DNR.
Right. Good idea.
You can, as a private citizen, do what you want. At the city, we're, we're going to let the DNR handle it, right?
I made a comment, uh, last Thursday night, we're two out of town on the beach. We got about fifty people show up, turn, uh, come in, and we have even had people come in early to help set up chairs. Really appreciate that. And they stayed afterwards, it was a great month. There were many questions and some ideas, and I thought it was worth the time. I would encourage other boards to do that. It gives people a feeling like they're participating, and, um, they get to see who you are and ask you correct questions. And, um, there were a few I couldn't answer. I had a, it was a mail from Jerry Bydows, um, 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 his, his profession. And, uh, one, one thing that stood out or kind of came out was transparency of operations. And I did tell them how to see the hundred and twenty pages behind the one-page agenda. So it's available. That, that would eliminate a lot of things. And then I found that, uh, you have to attend a series of meetings, you just can't come to one now, you know? Because government moves agonizingly slow, and, um, it just helps to be here and see the perception. Anyway, it was worth the time. It lasted about two hours, and, um, I was pleased with the turnout.
Okay. Any, anybody else?
I just want to remind, uh, people that our budget meetings are next week, Monday and Tuesday. Lots of your questions will be answered, it's, uh, well worth attending. I believe, Mandy, six o'clock, Monday and Tuesday? Yes, thank you, so.
Okay. Two weeks ago, we had a boys' state basketball game, so congrats to the boys and girls. That community, and I apologize for not necessarily what happened on the fellow Christian side, but I think they had a good season as well. Just a reminder what a fantastic community we live in with kids that want to strive for high levels and often personal, with a, a high standard. So we get to, uh, nipping at these meetings and, uh, forget just the big picture, how great a space we live in and how many neighbors we have. So I also want to say I'm thankful for CPA's just in general. That gets them decided, uh, it doesn't decide all of us, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, then, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please step forward a microphone, say your name and address, try to limit your comments to three minutes.
In the end, I've seen five twelve Lincoln Street. And I just want to thank Mr. Butler for his town hall meeting. I was there, it was very interesting, and I really appreciate how you answered people's questions. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, Mike Bukai, um, person, or, uh, person, um, city, um, living in Pella for over thirty years. I've coached, uh, soccer twenty-seven years in the community, which is, just means I'm old. But first of all, thank you all for your service and everything you guys do. You guys are coming into your budget review meetings. One little tidbit I wanted to make mention of is, uh, um, uh, there's a flutsole court, which is a small version of a soccer pitch that's, uh, been brought ahead of some of your city resources to be proposed to, um, take over a piece of concrete in West Colville Park. Um, it's a fifty by a hundred and five square of concrete. Uh, it's ties in well with, uh, Musco lighting out of Oskaloosa. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project that's been a hundred percent fundraised for. But I know it's in front of your budget review for consideration. We already, already had some really good interactions with some of your city resources, but just want to put a little plug in for that. We already had some really good interactions with some of your city resources, but just want to put a little plug in for that. Uh, we've done some nice fundraising with local businesses and even companies outside of Pella to help fund that. And it fits well with, uh, it's got a basketball courts on it as well, or basketball hoops that are part of it as well. So it takes a older court and upgrades it and adds some nice Musco lighting to it, so it'll be a nice little add to the community if it gets approved, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, hello, my name is Meredith Nadekoven. I am the owner of Barnes Hall Flowers and Produce, Barnes Hall and Company LLC out of Mahaska County. I'm a resident there, and I'm a farmer who contributes to the Pella Farmers Market the last two years when it moved to the square. I'd like to give you a perspective of how important the Pella Farmers Market is to this community. What is building a community, a place where people work together to welcome others, to feel included and valued? It's a place you can easily travel to, walk to, bike to, or drive to. For small towns like Pella, it's the downtown square, a very special place where all are welcomed and accepted on Thursday nights in Pella from May through October. What is building a healthy community? It's somewhere that people have options to build healthy lives around recreation, fresh food, and socialization. These are now known as building blocks for humanity. It's when basic needs are served so that everyone has the opportunity to grow. And what is building a supportive community? It's realizing that not everyone can afford the same things. Not everyone is like you, not everyone is like me, and not everyone is like us all sitting here today believing and knowing they have a voice that others are willing to hear. What is building a kind community? A place where people address their problems in a manner that doesn't slander and defame innocent people who are providing one of the most valuable services at their own expense. That's us, the farmers who attend the market. What is building an accessible community? For twenty-five nights a year on the downtown square, miracle workers, otherwise known as farmers. We're, isn't that amazing? Offer assistance in the form of organic nutrition. It's a special place and a special service where those who can come help often and do many times over, and we love to, especially me. What is building a fair community? A place where the backbone of its existence relies on ethics and morals to make just decisions that represent everyone in the most equal form. It's a place where there is no behind-the-back schemes and uncanny bullying to those that are vulnerable to the knowings of small-town politics. What is building a sustainable community? A place where twenty-five nights a year, the community knows its most central place. They can go to and find acceptance and love from people who are some of the hardest working in our community. A place where on Thursdays and July and August, there are activities, there are things to do, things to see and experience without discrimination and judgment. And what is building a community? What am I talking about here? It's the people at this meeting who are sitting in front of you, giving countless hours of time and effort to make the space downtown a truly memorable and beautiful place that is accessible to everyone and to everyone because they participate in the building of that community. A community is not built by one person, one business, one nonprofit, or one government member. It's built by the people who come there, it's built by the people who enjoy the space there. You're looking at that community in front of you, asking that you understand these steps to continue building a viable community. What I ask for the city council is to be aware that there is continued effort of building a community by us, the farmers. Let's work to build a community together where everyone feels seen and heard and valued. And I would like all us farmers, all in the United States, especially here in Marion County, Mahaski County, our surrounding counties, to feel seen and heard and valued. They're not here, they're not all here today, they're working, okay? All of those people that go to those farmers markets everywhere, and after all, this is what building a community is all about, right? And the Pella Farmers Market is a prime example of a foundational building block that continues to support this community, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I didn't realize, I'm sure I want any, um.
We can hear you.
Okay. Uh, Rebecca Jones, one, dear, Run Drive. I'm my own mayor, de ward, and distinguished council members. As stated, I am Rebecca Jones, and I currently serve as our Farmers Market Director. I say "serve" because myself and the board members, which includes Lisa Schau, who could not be here tonight, and Bob Zellstra, who is here, um, they are also unpaid volunteers. I realize I have three minutes to speak. However, if you're willing to indulge me, I feel that I can fill in some gaps that my colleague did not mention. The location of the Pella Farmers Market is critical not only to our vendors but for those who attend. Last season, our attempts to perform some market research, approximately thirty-five hundred surveyed participants, showed that seventy-six percent of our patrons are under the age of forty. The surveyed participants, um, fifty-four percent were visitors to Pella. Thirty-eight percent either lived in Pella or were told by someone who lived in Pella to visit. Seven and a half percent were people who were passing through Pella, and five percent were prompted to attend through media advertisements. Based on the postseason questionnaires that we sent out to our vendors, they saw increased sales and greater opportunities to engage with the patrons during the twenty-twenty-three season. This was not the case when the market was located off the square. Now, we realize that the mature population of our community liked the placement of us at the first church parking lot because they could drive through and order uh their their items and have them delivered to their vehicles. However, when a vendor signs up, um, they permit us to give their contact information out to the public so that they can ask the the vendors to meet them where they are or find a way to get that produce or those items to them. So, um, we understand that there are those that have difficulties accessing this, but this is how we kind of tailored that with our current location. The Pella Farmers Market is a rarity from the perspective that we focus on getting fresh protein, produce, protein, and artisan foods to everyone's table. This is Iowa. We should be promoting fresh, locally grown produce and protein and artisan foods that use these ingredients. As Iowans, we should also be supporting the creative efforts of other Iowans through their crafts, art, and literature. I would like to point out that the market also helps pay help, pay for the off-duty members of our police department to be present in the park. While this serves a specific need for the market, we like to think that it also helps promote positive community engagement and ensure the safety of all who are participating in park activities on Thursday evenings. As previously mentioned, our foot traffic and engagement opportunities came primarily from young families and single people. We offered live music and hot food the last season. Many comments were made that they did not have to cook and being able to browse while their children had a safe place to dance and burn off cement. We want to continue being an asset to the community and help offer all age groups a safe and fun environment on our beautiful spring, summer, and fall evenings in the Pella Sumature downtown area. And we cannot do that if we are out of sight and potentially out of mind.
Anyone else?
I don't think that I can get the microphone.
That's okay.
Uh, Shar Arrington, four zero six Spruce Drive, Pella. I just want to say that I support the Farmers Market on the square. I'm not able to garden for myself. I planted one tomato plant and a neighborhood deer came and helped themselves to it. So I rely on being able to get to the Farmers Market, and the city square is a prime location for myself and my grandchildren, my family. So I just wanted to note that I support the location of the square.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm gonna share the thought, um, why is this a city council?
I, I think it's just because we issued a permit.
Now, that may be reason, that's what I assumed, but I I didn't know if there was more to it than that or not. Otherwise, I'd organize a study.
I think one thing I'd like to say that I'm I'm very impressed with, um, is that, and you'll have to help me, Rebecca, with this. I was sadly unaware, but I'm very impressed that the Farmers Market pays WIC and another form of food assistance. And and I think that's huge.
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that I will additionally submit to the city for for our permit request on April second. Uh, we have a list of all of the things that we have done to contribute back to the community from last year and all the continued efforts that we will do this year, as well as the new additions that we're putting forward. So yes, all of our farmers have been formally educated this year by the help of other vendors who have this experience to accept WIC and to accept state-issued Farmers Market dollars. And these go to families that do not have the means to go and buy these things elsewhere. So this is a state initiative that we are fully on board with.
Thank you for doing that. I think that's an important piece that we all need to take away from this meeting tonight, that that you are doing that for people with limited means, thank you.
Yeah, I think that we are able to adjourn it to approve, we have to approve parking, closing, and that's a very record, special record, so that's why it matters to hear.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we will adjourn the policy and planning to discuss first item amendment for engineering services, Shive Hattery for the indoor recreation center project, Mike?
Hi, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and I would also like to state, Mr. Ron Heinz, Shive Hattery is in attendance this evening. If the city council has any questions on the proposed change order. What the change order involves, back in March of twenty-twenty-three, the city council authorized Shive Hattery to proceed with the design development phase of the engineering services. Now, at the time when we authorized the to proceed, we had an estimated base, base bid or base plan project cost of right around thirty-seven and a half million dollars. The full plan, which included alternates at the time, was forty-three million dollars. Now, Shive Hattery completed the design development phase on June of twenty-twenty-three. Afterwards, once the the design development base was submitted to the city, the next step was to prepare the construction documents, finalize plans for the project. In October of that year, after reviewing, and I would say it's somewhat of a fluid item, the city's long-term facility plan as far as financial resources and what we had, we had to make additional adjustments to the project as far as alternate and base, base bid items. So as far as the base plan, right now, the way we stand in Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, the base plan for the indoor recreation center is right around thirty-three point one million dollars, and that's about a four and a half million dollar decrease compared to the design development phase. The overall plan with alternates included is just to write around forty-one million dollars. Because we notified Shive in October of changes on there after they completed the design development and phase of the project, what Shive has reported back to city staff is they incurred roughly fifteen hundred hours of additional engineering, um, say, time that was needed to process the changes, what the city asked them to do. Namely, this involved the indoor, the indoor recreation pool, listing the indoor recreational pool as an alternate item. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Shive submitted this to city staff as far as the breakdown of their administrative fees that they had and the number of hours that they had along with the rates, and that is in accordance with the contract provisions. And they have requested additional compensation in the city of Pella, roughly two hundred thousand dollars. And presenting this item this evening, um, before it gets presented as formal consideration to the city council, we wanted to make sure that we answered any questions that council may have, or if there's any additional follow-up that we need to form on on this matter, we'd be more than happy to do that. On it, the best purpose tonight, Mr. Mayor, is to see directions on the proposed order, and if there's additional items or work that we need to do research on this or report back to the council, we'd be more than happy to do this. And with that, if there's any questions for city staff on this, we'd be more than happy to explain it. Otherwise, what I would ask is is Ron to eliminate missing details that were previously covered.
Do you have any to add, Ron?
Uh, no, first of all, we're, we're, thank you for the opportunity to work on this project. We've, uh, we've designed a wonderful facility to serve Pella and the community for a a long time, and, uh, you know, we, we have gone through some, a lot of steps to work on the budget, work on adding different alternates into the project, and it's been quite an exercise for us. And it, there comes a point where we have, where we have to notify the city staff we're working with that, uh, you know, hey, if if we change up the project and we are asking for compensation to change and get back to where we were at, come to deliverable on June.
This work has been done, right?
So that's what that's been reported, city staff?
That we all know. Any, anything else? All right, we'll have to bring for formal approval to a meeting. All right, moving on to the employee dental and vision benefit proposal for the next fiscal year, Mike?
Hi, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to turn this item over to our city clerk and HR director, Ms. Mandy Smith. Mandy, could you please pass, the council through this item?
Sure, yes, we're proposing some minor changes to dental and vision insurance as a result of employee feedback. Um, the first one is our maximum benefit for dental is currently seven hundred and fifty dollars, and if you need any dental work done, that's a very small amount. Uh, so we did get a quote to increase that benefit, actually double it to fifteen hundred dollars with a very minor premium increase to employees. Um, I did put this out to employees, got a lot of feedback that this would be a very appreciated change. So, um, that's the first recommendation. The second one is adding a traditional vision insurance plan. This is something that has been requested more and more through the years. Um, we were able to get a quote also from Delta that they would guarantee our premiums through twenty-twenty-eight and very reasonable rates. Um, again, brought this out to the employees and overwhelming feedback that this would be very appreciated. Um, important item for consideration, these are a hundred percent premiums covered by the employee, there's no cost to the city.
Okay.
No questions? Okay, hopefully I'm on a future event.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So Brandon Horst, Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, may I please call the roll?
Randall Horst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
We are adjourned.